We'll call it the order in this October meeting of the Town Council of North Manchester, Indiana. We welcome everyone in the room, appreciate all of your presence. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? I'm sorry, to the agenda? We have three sets of minutes to consider this evening, from July 30th, from August 21st, and from September 3rd. Move approval?
Second.
They've moved in second to approve those three sets of minutes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you. We have two opportunities in our agenda for any comments from visitors, to make any comments to council. We would ask that you would come to the podium, state your name and your address, and keep your remarks to two minutes. Is there anyone who... Now, this is separate from the public hearing that we're going to have in a little bit. This is just any general comments that anyone has. Anyone wish to address council? I do have... We did have two individuals at our last meeting who brought questions to council, and it's our practice that, in order to be accurate in our responses, that we respond to those questions at our next regular meeting. Unfortunately, neither of those individuals are here this evening to hear our responses, but we will respond. Bob Sklar from 116 West Main Street asked, "Does the town feel that the gesture made by a part-time police department employee meet appropriate conduct expectations?" Our answer to that is, "The town expects all employees to maintain appropriate conduct during their interactions with each other and with the public under all circumstances. In this situation, appropriate action has been taken according to town policies." He also asks, "Why are we providing police services within the county?" Our response is, "It is very common that adjacent municipalities provide mutual aid to each other. The town police department sparingly uses resources for county patrol unless the sheriff's department is unavailable and needs assistance." Both Mr. Sklar and Valerie Clarkson asked the same question about the fire protection fee that is being considered by council. Our response is, "This new rate structure of adding a fire protection fee to the existing utility bill was explained at length by our town manager at our September council meeting. But in addition, Baker Tilly will explain the reasoning behind municipalities adding the fire protection rate that is already incorporated into the existing water bill. We're taking steps to separate this flat monthly fee from the existing consumption-based Then Valerie Clarkson asked, "Where is the water improvement fund balance to help pay for these new meters, and are you using any of it to offset the water meter purchases?" The response is, "The September 1 balance in the water improvement fund is $326,000. The total water meter project cost is $1.2 million. There are insufficient funds in the improvement account for the total project." Second question, "Why are we still paying an EMS fee after LifeMed left town? The town filled the void of losing LifeMed by contracting local services with Parkview EMS. We bid EMS services out every five years, and part of the EMS agreement is the town and county must pay a monthly fee to the provider to help offset operational costs in a rural community." She also asked, "What is the town's plan to address the feral cats within the community?" Our response is, "The town had a great TNR program going, with a few local residents leading those efforts. The town has funds available to fix these feral cats if they are caught. We even have cages available in the transporting of them to the vet. Unfortunately, those local individuals were unable to continue the program due to health concerns. We are open to working with anyone in the community who would like to take on the voluntary leadership role to improve those neighborhoods with feral cat issues." We would like for anyone who's interested to talk to Adam with any names of individuals who would like to partner with the town in this program. And then, the last question was, "What is the town doing about newly hired police officers who leave shortly after graduation from the academy?" Our response is that fortunately for the town, the state legislature approved Senate Bill 95 and addressed this issue. In short, it allows for the public employer to get reimbursed for training expenses from the hiring public entity within a three-year timeframe after the officer graduates from the academy. Just as a editorial comment, it's one of the very few things probably that came from the legislature that was very positive. Anyway, those are our responses to the questions that were asked last time, and then again, unfortunately, the folks who asked them are not here to get the responses. We have an update this evening from Baker Tilly regarding water rate trends. Adam?
I'd like to introduce Ian Stoll and Jeff Rowell from Baker Tilly to discuss kind of what the findings were. They did a rate, water rate study when we started looking at the project costs to kind of see where we fell and what was needed to repay the bond that we'd be taking on, in addition to capital projects that we saw in the next five years that we may have to address items within this water system. They also did a cost of service analysis to look at our current rate system of how we charge our customers, where the large industries got deeper discounts on the more volumes that they used, which put more on back of the residents' shoulders to handle that financial burden. So with those two studies, they kind of have a presentation for us, so I'll turn it over to Ian to kind of explain the work and then talk about fire protection fee and the rest of the new term to communities as introduced. We're not the first one to do this. Many have been doing it for a while, but there's an explanation behind this. So, Ian?
Yep, thanks for that, Adam. Great input there, all very valid. So, good evening, council. So, we have prepared kind of a... I'll save you from the deep dive of the cost of service study, because I know we've kind of gone through that at a different meeting, maybe six months ago, back in March, just a little bit of that deep dive, but a lot of pages, a lot of narrative, but hopefully this kind of brings everything to a nice head in a summary that's a little bit more palatable. So, Adam has here, and I know you guys have this packet in front of you, kind of a history and headwinds of the water utility. So really, we're just laying the groundwork for kind of where we're at today and why we got to the point of the study. So, some history and headwinds here, as you can see on this second page of the slide. So, first thing being is that we have revenue bonds outstanding, the 2009 bonds. We still have, as of 12/31/24, which was our test year that we had utilized, about 1.2 million left of those bonds to be paid. So I know some payments have been made on those bonds, and not quite as much outstanding as of today's date, but just for reference there. We also did a rate adjustment back in April of '24, kind of a stepped approach towards these cost of service rates, but a minimal 5% increase to just help the water utility balances, and I know sewer did as well. So, kind of getting into today and kind of what we're seeing in cost of service is the project, which is a big driver of these rate increases. So we have a originally assumed $13.5 million project that we now have bids, and we're roughly around $12.7 million. So obviously, a win there when we're having bids come in a little bit lower than our initial estimation for those rates. Jeremy can probably speak to any of that if I'm misstating that, but just based on the original cost of service, a little bit higher estimates for those project costs than what we actually have today at $12.7 million. So, getting into some good news here in terms of bonding. Originally, we did assume that those bonds would all be through the pooled loan program with SRF, which is a higher interest rate, still competitive interest rate, but a little bit higher. We did receive great news from SRF, and I know Adam shared this as well, that there is... that we actually scored within the traditional loan funding program, which is a lower interest rate. It's the lowest interest rate SRF offers, a very competitive interest rate for a significant portion of the project, so about $9.2 million of that $12.7 million project. And the even better news is, SRF also, which we did not anticipate, gave us about $3 million of a forgivable ban or grant, in essence. So that is forgivable money all put towards the project, $3 million. We're not paying interest on it, we're not having to pay it back, and it is all up for money for that project, so offsetting the totality of what we have to bond out for. So, great news there. Doesn't... From where we anticipated the pooled loan program being, or us being in that scoring and then getting that, it is obviously a big win here. An additional component, which is a plus here, is we do have, of that $12.7 million, we do have some lead service line components, so SRF allows for those to be at 0% interest. So we have about $444,000 of lead service line replacement loans here, over 35 years that we'll repay those at 0% interest. So always nice when we're not tacking on extra interest over the life of a loan. One thing I did want to add here, and I know we're working with Jeremy and SRF on this, but there is some additional... Currently, what we have in the rates, and I know Adam probably explained this, was we had some inflated rates because SRF releases their quarterly interest rate each quarter. So on 10/1, so today, they'll be resetting rates, so we'll get it in a couple days, but essentially, every quarter, they'll go out and say, kind of do typically a 30-day look back and reset those interest rates. So once we have those final numbers, we'll obviously adjust rates down to where those would be, assuming they go down. But within the rates that we built into this, the summary and the cost of service, they are a little bit inflated, just so we don't have to come back to council for the adoption process and hold up any of the SRF closing window. So, that's something that we can... that we will be looking at and possible reduction there. But on top of that, related to interest rate reduction, there are some things called green project redundancies that SRF allows for some reductions in basis points. So, I know Jeremy has worked with the SRF technical team and engineering team, and we have a large portion of the project, the water meter portion of the project's about $1 million that is eligible for that interest rate reduction. So, we'll do our calculations once we have the interest rates, but they will allow up to 50 basis points of a reduction. So I say basis points, but to put it in layman's terms, if we have a 3.5% interest rate, there's potential we could go down to 3%. So they cap it at a 50% basis point max, but that's kind of the max potential there, but we'll have some interest rate savings there. As Adam mentioned, another headwind that we have here is just ongoing normal capital replacements, so everyday capital replacements that's in excess of the project itself. We went through, I know Adam went through, the utility heads, and we had about $258,000 annually to fund through those normal capital replacements. So that's something we took into consideration here, as well as the biggest thing here was just the deep discounts, as Adam mentioned, that was being had by those larger industrial users, or larger users in general, which is... which happens oftentimes when we look at this cost of service, because over time, when you're dealing across the board, rate increases, rates tend to get skewed, and that structure tends to get skewed. So, kind of bringing that together, the whole point of the cost of service is to take a look at that and make sure those inequities or subsidizations are no longer occurring, and kind of resetting that rate structure to right size. So moving forward into page three, and kind of going in line with what I just mentioned there, really, the whole point of this cost of service study was to really track through all the cost and usage characteristics of everybody that makes up the utility. So we went through an extensive process, I know, got numerous billing reports and consumer databases from Angie and Carrie. I apologize for all the emails, but thank you so much for bearing with us. But essentially, went through a whole kind of deep dive into the billing database and took everything into what these rates are and where the costs were being allocated. So that was the whole point of the cost of service study, and the whole goal was just making sure that we allocate those costs that are being incurred by the water utility and usage characteristics among the appropriate customer base or classes, if you will. So we have listed down there, your residential, commercial, industrial, and obviously shifting things towards fire protection. So moving on to page four here, as I mentioned and Adam mentioned previously, the findings were that there were some pretty steep subsidies occurring between the residential class, residential commercial class, and the industrial class. So obviously, the goal of this cost of service study was to reset that and making sure we're developing rates that are taking that into effect and kind of right sizing things that have been skewed traditionally. So, really, that's the goal of this cost of service study, and I'll open up any questions after this, but I wanted to get into, Adam mentioned the fire protection services here, and just kind of, I know that's kind of a hot topic, but just some details surrounding that and kind of what is that paying for, because I know that's a big question and not something everybody sees as far as a metered perspective. So, fire protection services, if we turn to page five, some detail behind it is essentially a standby service that's available on demand, so fire suppression, you can think of it that way. Took this from AWWA, it is, I have some rooting here in data, but your public fire protection surcharges essentially established to support the ability to be ready to provide adequate water quantities and pressures to meet firefighting needs at all times through the water distribution system. So what that means is, essentially, when you built your system, you would have had built in the capacity to be able to have those fire suppressing abilities, because you are putting out, if there's ever the worst case of a house fire, a business fire, you're going to have the ability, and there's a cost associated with utilizing that water and hydrant itself. So essentially, that's what those fire protection services are paying for, while you're not seeing it necessarily on... It's hard to see because you're not seeing it on a meter that you're having red at your house and paying for the gallon it's used. There's certainly a service, an essential service, that's already built into the system to provide those services if there is ever a catastrophic event of a fire. There are things that are being paid for additionally with that, your typical hydrant maintenance, things along those lines, that it helps support hydrant flushing, things along those lines. Historically, this has been built into the general fund and will carry budgets for it every year and paid through property tax bills, so it's getting paid, it's just not seen on the water bill. But what this does and kind of where a lot of communities are shifting towards if they don't already have this fire protection, a lot of them do, we work with plenty of them too, is it's really what we aimed for in this cost of service and sitting down with Adam and Carrie and getting this perspective was some of the uncertainty that's coming with all the legislation and the general fund potential uncertainty, was shifting that towards the water utility bill and kind of helping, giving a little bit of reprieve to the general fund for those changes in legislation. So again, something that has always been paid for on the property tax bills, it's not something that hasn't been paid for traditionally, it's just now you're seeing it on that bill. In the last comment here, I just have one small bullet point, the surcharge, I know there might be some confusion, but private sprinkler only meters, you're not going to be charged that surcharge. It's only for your normal water meters, the sprinkler only meters, not the case. So, page six and page seven, I know you guys have seen this probably a million times here, but just the current inflated rate structure. Again, I say inflated because obviously, we're making sure we don't have to come back and slow down that SRF process since we have a closing date established for end of November. So, to avoid any of that obviously inflated rate, so we can come back if rates do lower and adjust at the adoption. Moving forward into page eight here, just a little bit of perspective and kind of how that will impact certain users and gallons it's used. One more, Adam, if you can. There we go. So I know, Adam, you guys use 3,000 gallons, correct, as kind of a typical user? So that typical user right now with the current rate structure, you guys are around that $25, $26 mark per monthly bill, and now we're looking closer to that $40, $41 mark on a monthly bill. So about a $15 increase on a monthly bill for that typical user.
And that's a combined consumption and fire protection?
That's correct. That is all-inclusive, that is your fire protection, that is your 3,000 gallons of usage, all of those things combined, correct? And then, moving forward on to page nine here, just a quick graphic of kind of where we stand between current rates, and this is using 4,000 gallons, I apologize, that's typically what we utilize as these comparison charts in a typical residential user. So 5/8 inch meter, 4,000 gallons of usage, including fire protection surcharges. You can see there, currently, we're about $33 for a 4,000 gallon user, so right in the middle of the pack and moving towards, well, at the top end of the communities that we have listed here. I will say, I always add this caveat here because it is certainly a moving target on these comparison charts, so a lot of these communities are probably working through rates or a different project, I know there's a lot of projects going on, so once you jump to the top, it certainly doesn't mean that you're sitting there for the next 10 years. A lot of these communities on this list are probably working through a rate plan right now, or working on phased increases, so it is eventually being shipped back down to where you're... You're kind of shifting that 4,000 gallon bill average to other communities, so.
Are these the communities that you work with, or is that kind of in general, overall?
Yeah, Jeff and myself work with quite a few of the communities on this list. And we are, I mean, we do work with quite a few communities that are currently going through rate processes as we speak, so there's no shortage, and it's always that kind of that revolving door of resetting every... Typically, we see three years, three to five years of that reset and kind of right sizing, so.
Would you say larger communities have a lower rate because they've got more customer base or possibly larger industries?
You could say...
Or smaller communities have a higher rate because they just don't have the...
Yeah, you could say typically, because you're smaller communities, you're not spreading that out over a larger customer base or businesses or anything along those lines. So typically, you would see that it is a little bit higher in smaller communities, and larger communities have more to spread across, but obviously, there's outliers to that as well, but...
Yeah, every community is different.
Exactly. It really depends on projects. I know a lot of, and I'm sure Jeremy, you've seen this everywhere, CSO projects, I know this is water side of things, but just putting in perspective of sewer and just rates in general, different communities have different CSOs on the sewer side, different useful life of their treatment plants, it just kind of really depends on when you're doing projects and the magnitude of projects or breaks, things along those lines.
All right, thank you, Ian. Any questions from the council on his presentation or clarification? I know you've seen this before, but you're hoping to by next meeting to have a final...
Oh, we will by next meeting.
Yes, where we land?
SRF should have, so today was technically the new quarter, but usually, it takes them a couple days till they have the interest rates calculated, but certainly hoping that there's a good news and that a decrease in those rates, obviously, can't promise that, but obviously, seen some good things going on with rate cuts in general, so. But we'll certainly see and keep you guys in the loop as we hear more in the next couple days of kind of where those rates pan out, and then we'll get the calculations for that GPR or the green project redundancies in there, so we get some basis point reductions as well, so we'll work alongside SRF for that. But they're well aware, and Jeremy has made them well aware on that too, so, and they're all in agreeance with that, so should see some basis point reduction from that at least.
I want to publicly thank Baker Tilly, Jeff and Ian. We've been working with them for quite a while, but particularly on this project, we've found some new gain... or wins, I guess, from the community on interest rates, on that forgivable loan, working with Commonwealth. You guys have done a wonderful job on trying to get the best possible outcome for us, so I appreciate your effort, so.
Yeah, no, thank you guys very much, and thanks for all the responses to email very quickly, and Angie too, so that was, it's always very nice, so appreciate it. Thanks.
We do have scheduled this evening a public hearing regarding the water rate increase. I will open the public hearing at this time. I'll ask Adam to generally review the situation, and then we'll ask for any comments from those in attendance regarding the proposed water rate increase. So the public hearing is now open. Adam?
I don't have too much more to add. We've been talking about this for many, many weeks or many months in the council meetings. Baker Tilly did a pretty good job of overview where we're going to land, kind of the minimum water user that has the 3,000 gallon, it'll go from about $25 to $40, pending a little bit of shifting there on interest rates. So nothing's changed from the last first, or I guess the first reading that we had in September. Other than I did want to add one wording, verbiage on section four of that, which would include, "At the request of the customer, increase or decreasing the size of an existing meter will incur a cost to be paid by the customer, and will be calculated with standard labor rates and material services at the time of request." So if somebody wants to go up or down a size, it would be no different than somebody asks for a new service, there's material costs to that and labor for our staff to do that, so we want to have that at least in order, and so we can charge for that service, so.
Anyone wish to make a comment about the water rate increase?
I'll be quick, Patrick. Like I said this a couple meetings ago, I'm Dan Kraus, 609 Meadow Lane, North Manchester. It's not easy to raise rates, nobody likes it, but we do like services that work and that are managed by our town and not sold to a private company, and so I know it's been a difficult job to do and a long road to get to this point, but I appreciate you doing that work and keeping our town running. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll close the public hearing, and thank you, everyone. Moving on to our regular agenda, under unfinished business, the 2026 budget, general ordinance number six on second reading. Carrie?
I'd like to take a minute to address a statement that I made at the public hearing last month on the budget. I misstated how much the budget increased, I didn't take a look at some of the numbers, and the funds that are covered by the DLGF, we have a year-over-year increase from $25 to $26 of $62,108. That's the amount of appropriations that went up. And of the 31 funds that we budget, which are not utility funds, but the town funds, we have 31 funds that are budgeted, and from $25 to $26, our appropriations are actually going down $190,000. So the budget year-over-year is actually going down. So with that, general... or this, yeah, general ordinance number six, 2025.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved in second to approve general ordinance number six, the 2026 budget on second reading. Any discussion? Thank you for that good news. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you. Anyone wanting to suspend the rules to move to third reading?
So moved.
Second.
They've moved in second to suspend our rules so that we can move to third reading and keep the DLGF schedule happening. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you. Now we'll accept the motion to move to third reading on general ordinance number six.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second to move to third reading on general ordinance number six. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you, and now we'll move, we need to re...
We reinstate the rules.
Reinstate the rules. Moved in second to reinstate the rules, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you. Number two, water rate ordinance, general ordinance number seven on second reading by title.
Okay, and that is ordinance of ending the rates and charges for the use and services rendered by the waterwork system of the town of North Manchester.
Move. They've moved in second to approve general ordinance number seven on second reading. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? I'll just make a comment about that, and that's the fact that it seems like from... like from Ian's presentation and also from, from all the work that has gone into this, that the work is necessary. There's no doubt about that. And the climate that we're in right now regarding bids, as well as financing, makes it about as good a situation as we could hope for. So we're glad about that. Number three, sewer use ordinance amendments, general ordinance number eight on second reading, again by title.
General ordinance number eight, 2025, and ordinance amending specific sections of the municipal code of the town of North Manchester.
Move approval?
Aye.
Asking Adam for comments.
Why?
Always twice. So this is changes that when we renewed our NPTDS permit, they had comments that we needed to update our sewer use ordinance, which basically just allows us to control what is put down in our sewer and how we handle those situations when it's adversely affecting the treatment plant or the public. So Commonwealth worked with us on those changes. So we need to update things. And after final approval, we'll send them to IM to verify that we had it taken care of. So.
Did I hear a motion?
In the second.
Moved in second to approve sewer use ordinance amendments, general ordinance number eight on second reading. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. Moving into new business, water infrastructure notice of award. Adam?
The September meeting, we had awarded or had the intent to award our contract to Atlas. They were the low bidder at $9,020,000 even. So with that, there was some due diligence between that meeting and this meeting. So now we're prepared to have the official notice of award agreed on and signed. And then after that, we'll have our item number two, kind of talk about the approval of the contract and notice to proceed. Jeremy's going to clean it all up and say why we need to do.
Jeremy looks like he's in peace of talk.
Yeah. The first one's easy, just official does award. The last one wasn't intended just so the contractor could lock in pricing with suppliers and things. So that was just to help them out a little bit, which was all contingent on financing. This one's official, officially notice of award. Project is being awarded to Atlas for $9,020,000.
Did I hear a motion?
So.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the water infrastructure notice of award. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy.
The next grouping is for the contract approval and those proceed. This one I would suggest make a contingent on SRF financing. You have a loan closing scheduled for November 12th. So just a little bit of a backing. So if that date slips at all, you can flip all the contracts and still have that out. So what we do is approval contingent on the financing. We would share the contract with the contractor, have them sign, send bonds, insurance back to us, coordinate with Adam to get signatures in place. And once that November 12th closing happens, then release all documents to all parties.
Under those circumstances, would someone make a motion?
Contingent on.
Whatever he said.
Move to approve whatever he said.
Contingent on financing.
Oh, is that it?
Yeah.
There was more than that.
I hear a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Alan seconded it. Thank you. It moved in second to approve the Atlas contract under the circumstances that Jeremy explained. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. Number three, Commonwealth Engineering Services contract amendment.
Jeremy and his team do not want to do this pro bono and.
What?
They do, do a lot of good work and so we need to pay them for that. So this contract that we have in front of you is kind of amendment to the original. The original contract, which was around $900,000, did a design permitting stuff before we got to bidding and through bidding. And then, once we've got a contractor that's continuously under contract, the second piece will cover construction admin services, the cost of onsite inspectors. Since this project is so large and there'll be two different areas being worked on, we feel like we need to have inspected there to make sure it's done appropriately. And then also labor standard inspection, BABA compliance, post-construction monitoring. So all that stuff will be in this second kind of amendment contract, not to exceed 686,171. So that will be kind of like built on an hourly rate. So that's not to exceed amount. So I would seek that the council prove that. They've been doing good work and I want to see them to the end.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the Commonwealth Engineering Services contract amendment. Any discussion?
I generally have a disdain for consultants and/or advisors and/or.
Don't take this the wrong way.
However, Jeremy and Chris have been, and their team have been absolutely invaluable. The line of communication has been absolutely fantastic into a world that I would not have otherwise known a wristwash from a cheese sandwich. So I appreciate very much all of your guidance and expertise and you guys being on the level. So thank you very much.
Appreciate you being on our team and. I don't know. I, I think we all echo Toby's sentiments. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. Thank you again, Jeremy.
That's the first thing.
Number four, Imagine 185 funding request, Adam?
So I have a new face to introduce to council if it hasn't been already. So, and an old face.
You've got, I think you've got places to be.
He's aging as we speak.
Yes.
Have Connor Heineman here, the new Imagine 185 director, who took out Stanner's place when he moved on to the Community Foundation director position. So Connor's here to then give an update on what's been happening this past year or so, since he's been in the home. Did include his quarter three update for Imagine 185 projects that he's working on. So that's high off the press from, I think, yesterday. Can you hand that print out? In addition to, he has requests for some funds. Has had a three-year contract that finished up last year. So he's looking to seek some funding for 2026.
Yep. Real quick, I'll let Connor spend the majority of the time here just providing an update on a little bit where we've been, but where we're headed. I just wanted to speak to you all just tactfully on what's changed of transitioning to Connor and how it looks now compared to how it looked the first three years with Imagine 185. When I made the transition to the Community Foundation in March, working with the board of the Community Foundation and the Imagine 185 board to kind of transition that work, where we landed, where both of those groups landed, in the first three years of Imagine 185, as the director, my contract was held at Grow Wall Bash County and all cities and towns, so all five incorporated communities, the county and the Community Foundation paid into Grow Wall Bash County, and then they set aside money of their own. So those eight entities paid in, Grow Wall Bash County held that budget for my contract and then implementation expenses. The only thing that's different now and moving forward, the Imagine 185 board has gone around and said this, that the structure has shifted to where the Community Foundation now switched spots with Grow Wall Bash County, both from a, we already had an Imagine 185 fund where we had some great funds left over already. So the infrastructure's in place. And now we hold the budget in the cities and towns, Grow Wall Bash County, and the county pays into the Community Foundation, Imagine 185 fund, that Connor is an employee of the Community Foundation. And day to day, with the transition, he and I reports directly to me, but ultimately has responsibility to the Imagine 185 board. It has a representative still from each of those paying entities, provides a quarterly written report that Adam will provide to you all moving forward. But day to day, just works hand in hand with me on the implementation work. And so that's just a change of where, how was the first three years to where we are now. I'll let Connor get into population update a little bit on where the implementation from Imagine 185 stands. We have just roughly talked internally though, that in the next few years from now, just based on where projects stand, that we'll be at a stage of starting to lay the groundwork for what the next 10 years after that looks like and what that planning process may look in the future. But.
Connor started, I kind of informed the general public, he was now listening to the recording, but Imagine 185 was a county comprehensive, countywide comprehensive plan that was created in 2021.
Adopted in 21, started in 2019.
So many years have passed since that adoption, but that was when all the communities that adopted that within the county decided we don't want to just sit a plan on the shelf and get dusty. We want to have somebody doing that work every day. And so that was when we created that position and that advisory board to oversee the making sure that 85 recommendations within that plan, we were moving those forward and helping the different communities attain those goals. So that's what this position is about. So turn it back over to Connor then.
Thank you. Well, first off, a little background about me since not everybody knows who I am. Originally from Tipton County, Indiana, went to Manchester University for the past four years. Just graduated this past May with a management marketing degree. So I've been at the helm for a little bit, about four months now. So it's been a lot. Been moving very fast, but it's been, it's been a pleasure every day to come to work. So starting off with the stellar projects that we have going on, the Rowan Park project, which is actually breaking ground this Sunday, the Daniels Place Respite Care Facility that's going in the North Manchester here on Market Street. That project will begin in February of 2026. The Living Well Senior Center renovation in Wall Bash, they're still looking to find some funding, but construction's planned on starting in the back half of 2026 there. The Wall Bash Riverwalk extension is looking to have construction begin in the spring of 2027. The La Fountain Park project, the La Fountain Stormwater project. And then taking a look at the Lilly College and Community Collaboration Grant that we have received here in North Manchester, starting off with the Oak River Commons project, that's looking to begin in the spring of 2027. Right now we're going through due diligence and design phases. And then the Manchester Mile project, which connects the Oak River Commons from Market Street up to College Avenue, is a new streetscape project, which is looking to begin in 2026. And that project will connect us right to the College Road project, which is the development of 20 sellable townhome units, which is looking to finish up phase one, which is six total buildings or six total units, three buildings. Phase one is looking to end around February of 2026. And then a couple other projects are the Wall Bash County Fellowship Program that Imagine 185 runs, and then the Wall Bash County Development Corporation, which is our countywide non-for-profit development entity that I, myself, staffs, and then Alex Nowler. And then again, a couple of just population numbers since the beginning of Imagine 185. 2024 marked the first year in four decades that Wall Bash County saw a population increase. And then since the implementation of Imagine 185, we've only seen our net migration increase, which is the amount of people who leave the county versus the amount of people who enter the county. So since the past four years, we've only seen that number increase of people migrating to the county. So that's all the updates that I have. I'm happy to take any questions.
I have a general disdain for, I'm just kidding. You guys have been fantastic, easy to work with, and the proof's in the pudding and you're showing some results. So good job.
You're oriented this evening.
I'm starting.
Which is a pudding.
Start.
Happy to take any questions from the public also. That'll move me to formally requesting the amount of $10,000 for the year of 2026. That's the same amount that the town has continued to provide for the first initial three-year funding period from the town.
Any questions for Connor?
I have one question for Connor. The fellowship program, which takes mostly college interns, more or less, over the summer when they're all, and they come and live within the community. And they come from all over the country. And then somebody from college last year that came, they, they work with a local employer, get to give some real world experience and then get to experience Wall Bash County and all the different amenities that we have with the hopes that they would stay here.
Correct.
I heard, is there 10 students from MU that are going to be in that program?
Yeah, correct. Correct. So the first two years of the program, we allotted 10 slots. This past year we had 12, but mainly we focus on popular, or attraction of college students from outside of Wall Bash County. And so this year, or looking into 2026, we're going to expand the program to 20 total slots, still remaining with the 10 students from outside of Wall Bash County, but holding 10 slots specifically for Manchester University students. Since they're right in our backyard, we got to capitalize on having those students for a full year to be in here. So.
And the, one of the big goals is to attract those, those students to establish a relationship with an employer that means they'll stay at Wall Bash County.
Correct.
Correct.
We work to find them housing. If, if they want to come back to Wall Bash County, we'll work to find them housing. If that original employer doesn't work out, we will work to find another employer with our county. So, yeah.
Heard nothing but rate reviews on that program and.
For sure.
The people who, they just kind of stay together as a group. They'll travel and do things as a group and that builds lifelong friendships. But also then as they work with the different entities in the community, MPSA, I think, or several in Wall Bash, Entertech Products, they kind of build that roots in. And a lot of the industries are impressed with the students that want to hire them as soon as they graduate. So that's a positive program. And I think other communities are probably looking at how we did that. So, yeah, good job on that. Appreciate it.
And as far as trying to find them housing is concerned, I understand there are some townhomes that might be available.
That's correct. That's correct.
It's our practice that we don't approve a request, a funding request at this meeting, but we ask questions as we have been doing and then we'll consider the request at our next meeting.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Connor. Number five, permission to purchase new radios.
So Nate, back to go, he's going to get more details about it, but we've got some existing portable radios that need replaced. And Nate has found some. We talked about this at our budget time, that they were needing to be replaced. So Nate, can you give some more details about that?
Currently we have Motorola radios, our repeater, and our mobiles that are carved are both a Kenwood brand. So I'm requesting to purchase Kenwood radios. That would do all three entities on a Kenwood radio. That would then give us access back to a digital frequency, which would be clearer than the analog frequency that we're currently on. Also going with all three the same brand, we would be able to take one of our channels, our primary channel, and encrypt it. So it's an officer safety issue. So that way they won't be like here's talking would be officers to officers and officers to dispatch. There is still a dual band radio. Because right now, how Manchester sits, we sit in the valley, that's not changing. The state has an 800 frequency channel. It does not come into Manchester reliably at all. When we go out and do a joint operation with the county outside the county, we'll switch our channels back over to an 800 channel. So we get to talk to county all on one frequency. That's a very crucial relay time of information when you're talking directly from officer to officer versus officer to dispatch back to the officers. That might be on the other side of the house. So, so that's why I'm requesting the Kenwood radios is to get us all back on Kenwood digital channel, encrypted channel. At 13 radios, we have 11 officer right now. So 13 radios, two extra radios, that would be as too far out of scope in case you have one fail, maybe for one reason they call a guy in and forgets his radio at home. I would have a spare year to give him for that time.
What's the warranty on that, those radios, a year?
Might, I might have a quote. Says three-year warranty.
Okay.
What's the general lifespan of a, I mean, from what you've seen with the Motorola's?
Some of these current Motorola's that we've had, we got those maybe four, five years ago. I've never had good luck with them. The previous ones, I would say were Kenwood. We had those, we had those a while. We got those later cheap parry before we switched over. And I think the reason why they switched over to those Motorola's, they were a dual band radio at the time. We had a VHF radio, an 800 radio. Well, our bodies can only hold so much equipment. So even as big as I am, yeah. So it's just down to one radio. That's still what we'd like to keep is one radio. That's the piece of equipment that's here.
So just, and this is not, this is just a, I'm not pinning you to the wall here. You figure based on what you've seen, we'll get five years out of these, maybe six, seven, five, four, like what?
I would, I would, six to 10. Maybe, I mean. I mean, I don't think the guys are that hard on radios.
You're right.
But I can't. They try a little bit, what they do today to harm them.
Absolutely.
Nowhere is harder on a man than what fire department. That's it for me.
Any other questions? Nate?
What does the devil need?
The tool for thirteen radios programming, seventy thousand five hundred forty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents.
And dollars are coming from?
Lloyd Public Safety.
Lloyd Public Safety.
That's what they're for.
Moved and seconded to approve the purchase of the radios as outlined by Adam and Nate. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you. That concludes our regular agenda, moving on to the Departmental and Commission reports and I'll turn it back over to Nate.
This one was fairly busy for us. I can't remember the exact date. We had a report of a suspicious vehicle down here, well, the old daycare on the corner of South and Wall Bash. The guy down there checked it out, ended up being a stolen vehicle out of Elkhart. So they were able to recover that stolen vehicle and help Elkhart out with their investigation. Through our flock camera system and the joint camera system that we have, we were notified on a Saturday morning of a stolen vehicle coming northbound on Zero Thirteen. And working with county, we were able to intercept that stolen vehicle, took the individual to custody without incident, got that vehicle recovered and get it transported back down to Indianapolis for what we reported stolen out of. We had several of our new officers volunteer to lead the homecoming parade, so that was kind of exciting to see, see them step up and do that. About half the department, we brought in McKenzie color Kern. She came in and gave us a very, very basic Spanish class. I had high interest in, like I said, I half the department attended that, which was a good size. We laughed at each other trying to pronounce words. It might be something we continue to maybe reach out to do so the guys can help bridge a gap and learn to speak a different language when we need to speak a different language. And then also Friday, October thirty-first, we'll have trick-or-treating, five p.m. to eight p.m.
Like if it rains. What happens if it rains? Just suck it up.
And it's a trick. Or a treat.
Thank you, Keith. Fire department.
Back in January, I started the process of specing a new fire engine. After receiving that first set of specs, we went through them four different times and they, the company has gotten rid of a lot of options that we want. So I reached out to two others, manufacturers, and I have received their price estimates as the spec reads. Back in 2016, we bought our respec and got our 2017 engine for four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Well, just in the last three to five years, the price of fire engines more than doubled. So I am going to be having a discussion with Kerry and Adam, see what course of action we want to take. Also, our department's regular business meeting, the members voted to accept Cody Edgar as a probationary firefighter. On September twentieth was our pancake breakfast. The department decided to donate proceeds to, to local families whose sons are fighting And the last thing, MES within last week to do our SDBA flow testing that has to be done every year. We have been busy.
Any questions for Cam? Thank you, Cam.
Nothing commissioned, Dave? I have preliminary planning commission and BZ meeting scheduled for October and got a call this morning and they decided to, they're doing some changing and they decided to move it to first special exception and they want to move it to November. So we won't be having a planning commission at this time or BZ meeting for the month of October. And I went on my report and another thing I remembered was that Adam and I attended a road re-meeting with Jim, thinking I have to go for something like that to talk about town ordinances and this one.
We're very happy to have you. Thank you. Anything from RDC?
RDC will be meeting October eighth to open our housing proposal, Phase Two development next to Chester Heights. So curious about proposals that have gotten interest.
Fingers crossed. Public works, Craig?
Fall cleanups, the seventeenth and eighteenth, coming up in two weeks and we've been busy cutting trees down for the Manchester Mile, so I guess we're getting ready for that. Might be done about tomorrow or so, we'll see.
Ryan?
Just had two quick updates. The meter project is down to less than a hundred meters, of which all of those are inside. So if you can imagine, they're a little difficult to track people down. But hopefully within the next week or two, that will be about empty. So that will be much anticipated. The South Water Tower was last week, we drained it. They just did a scheduled pressure cleaning on the inside and outside. The interior looked to be in excellent condition and they are installed to date at thought of perfection, which is just kind of a long-term help for corrosion and rust in the tanks. So hopefully by tomorrow, I can start refilling it, we'll sample it and hopefully within a week or so, back on service.
Questions for Ryan? Thank you, Ryan. Town managers report.
Two updates from the departments that are not here, that are on vacation. The wastewater, the Beckley Street pump station that we kind of signed last summer, it's finally been switched over to the new controls, a new pump tank and so everything seems to be working well. There's a few small items that are left to be addressed, but the majority is substantially done. And then the Parks Department, the aquatic facility was, both pools are open September fifteenth. I think the machine and the dehumidifier system is doing well. I think they had a few hiccups of the first week of shutdowns and then they had the technicians come back, but I believe it's running now. So that was a good addition and use of ARPA money. The Great Pumpkin Hunt, along with Trick or Treat, that same time, but this Pumpkin Hunt will be evening of October twenty-seventh at seven fifteen. And then the pickleball court ribbon cutting had approximately a hundred and fifty people last Saturday, so you haven't saw the pictures of it, well-attended. And if you drive by anytime between five and dark, there's, courts are packed, so very well accepted by the community. And then as far as bridge projects in town, we're on the cusp of, in Nightmare Row again when it comes to traffic. So I met with, for the South Market Street Bridge, Endot had their kind of pre-construction meeting with that contractor and that project itself is a county project, it's a county bridge, but the fact that it will affect travel within the community, utilities, trash service, anybody downtown, I'm going to be going to those meetings. But as of right now, they gave me the wide timeframe of January to July of 2026 is when they'll start. I'm trying to encourage them to start in January as much as they can to finish up before next winter. Originally, they said it'd be a three to five-month complete shutdown of South Market Street. Now they're saying six to eight months, probably more in the latter, and I was not anticipating that. So community have to be patient about that. There's going to be one entrance exit on anything south of the river on that community neighborhood. I will continue to update the public as I find information, but that's the latest on that one. And then the South, or State Route One Fourteen Bridge demolition is to start in two to three weeks. They'll be starting on the north side and go down to One Lane. I've been talking to the community schools about buses. I think SROs might have to help getting buses out on the road. They're going to end up closing South River Road, they're going to leave that open for this first phase, but given that there shouldn't be much traffic down there, it could extend the travel going east and west on the, instead of having three signals, having two, the lead time letting those cars go through. And we're going to close South River Road and just allow east and west travel only. And then you can turn on Merkel Street if you want to go to the elementary school. So yeah, that one should be starting anytime and just give yourself a couple extra minutes when you go to Fort Wayne or anyplace east. I have not heard from the county yet. I'm anticipating the cover bridge will be closed as well, but that's their call and not ours with a lot of the school traffic. So drive slow and give yourself some extra time. And the water main relocation, which is kind of before the Market Street Bridge gets replaced, that should start in late October. Ryan and I have been meeting with the contractor and going through the material approvals on that. So that board job hopefully will be three to four days. They can get most of that done, but they've got to go from north side of the highway, underneath the highway, underneath the river and come back up. It's around five hundred feet that they have to put in of new water main. And with the stellar projects for the Market Street, Manchester Mile, Endot was gracious enough to move my quarter reporting back one quarter, so I don't have to report that until January, even though there's not much work on it. Once they put a description number for that project, I've got to be reporting to them and apparently I've got to go up to the Endot facility at Fort Wayne to discuss the project every quarter. So learning something new on that Endot's reporting. And I think that is everything.
Any questions for Adam?
Was there anything said about the State Route Thirteen closure?
I think they're still scheduled for mid-November opening, so no early missile for you. Good news is not going to be later, but this is, they're still target deadline or end date.
Well, should it was?
Yeah.
Kurt Treacher's report?
For usual, we got a couple dockets and the first one is a town docket for five hundred seventy-four thousand dollars, seven hundred thirty-five, thirty-six, which is about half of last month. I'm glad for that.
Will we pay our bills?
You want to do the other one?
Yeah.
Okay. Utility docket, four fifty-four, three fifty-one, eighty-one.
Will we pay our bills?
There we go.
Second. It moved and seconded for us to pay our bills. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay? Thank you. This is the second opportunity in our agenda for anyone, any visitors to address council. If you would like to do that, please approach the podium, give us your name and your address and keep your remarks to two minutes. Would anyone like to address council? Thank you. Any council comments? I'll just make note that our next regular meeting is November the fifth and we are adjourned.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to acknowledge, we had a very good audit report from the state.
That's correct.
It was about a month long. I don't know if Kerry wanted to talk anymore about it, but we had a very good exit conference. It was part of that that had to be done before the SRF projects that we got going, but great job by her and anybody who works in the financing on the utility side, very, very good audit.
I, I guess I would like for me to get Kerry, but Adam said it's, unfortunately with the audits, it's, it's my neck on the line, my reputation, but it is everyone that puts the effort into it and we all do our jobs very, very well and it got a zero comment audit, so that's pretty awesome.
Can't ask for anything better than that. Now we are adjourned.